Very happy to see you here today, Deputy Town Attorney Don Swanson. I'm Mr. Ibelito. This is John, is town attorney, is he present today?
Uh, no.
Okay. So, uh, my name's Robert Rip. Some people know me, some people don't. I live on Seventy-seventh and Slice Road in Massapequa, New York. And it's not my first time speaking from the town. And actually, I want to say thank you, Mr. Vendetto, for the time that you took to spend and sit down to listen to my whole, uh, incident controversy, however we want to say it. I know there's a lot to it, and a lot of it is just completely unbelievable. Um, I just prepared a little something. I just want to start out saying congratulations to the town attorney's office. You've worked three years now. I don't know how many billable attorney hours, hundreds, thousands. The county went through a full jury trial, over three dozen court appearances, and you secured your conviction against me. Uh, there's no more question of what's right and what's wrong. Nassau County Court has determined that it's against town code section two forty-six dash eight-point-two-point-six to park any type of vehicle on unpaid service. Um, I don't really think that town won that case against me. I kind of think I lost it, but I'm out of attorneys, that's okay. And I kind of think that, um, everyone will eventually see that it was never a question of me parking my boat on the grass. It was more a question of a code enforcement agent that I felt was belligerent and that eventually issued, did issue me a summons with some charges that eventually were dismissed. And I just think the whole thing snowballed. Unfortunately, I think that everything, everything that happened was basically vindictive on the town attorney's part. Um, I mean, this is my court file for a hundred and fifty dollars fine. What's amazing is... Excuse me, sorry about that. Uh, like I was saying, eventually the town got their conviction. And, uh, what, what I really found unbelievable was one of the attorneys who was actually in the courtroom testifying or speaking to the judge on the record, filling out papers, she's right here today, town attorney Don Swanson, congratulating her on your conviction. Meanwhile, while she's in the courtroom to work to convict me, it turns out that I substantiated and I provided on three separate occasions, the town of West Bay and all of the town council members and yourself, Mr. Vendetto, with the town's official written complaint form, a request for investigation. And I've completed and, uh, attached on each incident substantiating documentation photographs that prove that the town attorney that was in the courtroom working to convict me is committing the same crimes that she's convicting me for at the same time she's in the courtroom convicting me. Um, before I, before I run off on a tangent, I need to remind everybody here that as a United States citizen, citizen of West Bay, I have a right to challenge a criminal charge if I think I'm innocent or the charge doesn't fit the crime, right? I don't think that I should have been treated with contempt and as an adversary by the town employees I've encountered, as I have. And now, from what I understand, I'm apparently going to be portrayed as a disgruntled, malcontent soul loser seeking revenge or retribution. I can surely, that's not the point, and that's not what I'm doing here today.
All right, I hope you don't think that's having any problem, you or...
No, 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 no. Actually, I like you, John. I think you're a good guy. I'm really, I'm sorry that you're in this predicament. I, I want you to do the right thing, and I, I know what, how hard this is going to be for you.
Well, no, it's not difficult at all. Uh, and I, you and I had, I thought we had some very, a couple of very nice meetings. It was actually very enjoyable and, uh, it sounded mutual admiration society, but I might be very much, okay, there I said it. Unfortunately, we were able to arrive at an amicable resolution. And I, I think before we go any further, just so my own, uh, my own conscience, I guess, is clear, one of the things that we discussed quite a number of times in this office, I thought at our first meeting, we actually were getting close to an amicable resolution. And then I, at the second meeting, I think we brought up the subject of money, and I told you I would look into that, I wasn't sure that that could be done.
Oh, I, I...
No, 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 let me finish my statement.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And you, you'll pass, you'll, we'll figure the dates. Um, and, um, I told you, I didn't know if that was doable or not. And then, before I even got back to you, I, the money issue, I think you called me and said, I rethought everything, I don't want to go any further. One of the things I said to you during the course of the meetings is that if we don't act to control our own destiny here vis-à-vis an amicable resolution, then all that was really left to do was to refer the entire matter before, or whatever it is, four-year history with all of the allegations that apparently you're about to lay out, refer everything to an outside agency, whether it be the Board of or the District Attorney's Office or whatever other entities we discuss, just so you know. This entire matter and everything that I can think of associated with it, from, uh, the allegations that you're alluding to, to all of the various foil requests that you submitted to the town, are now all with an outside agency. They are with the Nassau County District Attorney's Office at my direction, and they are, of course, still in the courts with respect to the foil request. So, you said something earlier which, no, no, I'm almost done. You said something earlier which triggered what I wanted to say to you. You're not an attorney, you did litigate pro se, and you're certainly entitled to do that. But just, I want to be clear with you that all of the matters under discussion, and I mean every document we can, we can find, have all been submitted to the outside agencies for evaluation, so once and for all, we can resolve a four-year record that is replete, and I mean replete, with countless conflicting allegations between yourself and the town of West Bay and its various personnel. So, all that is being worked on by those agencies. And with that in mind, you know, you may want to, no pun intended, govern yourself accordingly, but I'll leave that to you.
Oh, that's, that's quite all right. I don't believe I've done anything wrong.
No, no.
That's, that's okay. And I appreciate and I'm glad that you referred my complaints, my allegations, to the appropriate law enforcement agencies. However, I have to remind you, it doesn't relieve you of your obligation to investigate my complaints at the town level.
Oh, that's...
Excuse me, let me finish my question.
That's all right, thank you.
Okay. There, there have been, and I just want to interrupt myself for one second. A lot of people that are here probably don't realize I'm a retired police officer, it doesn't make me here or anything. However, I learned something, document, document, document. Unfounded allegations are just that, unfounded allegations. I don't make unfounded allegations. Every allegation I made was complete with substantiating documentation. If you feel that there are conflicting reasons, I understand, you, you're allowed, that's the judicial system, I'm good with that. And I wanted to say that I'm okay with being found guilty and being fined a hundred and fifty dollars for parking my boat in the grass in my fenced inside yard. I believe in the judicial system, okay? I, I, I didn't think the code, uh, interpreted that, and from subsequent conversations with yourself and from Mr. Ibelito, both of you guys didn't think the code interpreted to that.
I, I, well, no, no, see, I have to stop you there. You gotta be fair, Robert. When we met, we talked about, correct me if I'm wrong, it's my recollection. By the way, getting back to us, as I said before, we have completed our investigation in town.
Oh, sorry.
And, yeah, well, and all of our findings, and Mr. Savelico, correct me if I'm wrong, all of our findings and all of our conclusions to the best we can determine from the record have been submitted to the district attorney, am I correct?
Yes, the handle of it on Friday, into what we're there for, the Bureau of Chief of Public Corruption.
Okay.
Okay, I appreciate that, I, I'm sorry.
But let me get back to something, because I, the one thing we can do is, when you and I spoke, uh, we talked about the code, and I, I indicated to you as part of the resolution we were trying to put together, that we would go back and revisit the code to see what, if any, adjustments were necessary. I said that to you. I also said to you that the purpose of our meeting was not to look back and assess blame, it was to look forward as a means of trying to settle the controversies. That's a pretty fair statement, what I said to you, I think.
Yes, it is. That is a statement of what you said. Unfortunately, uh, I have to disagree with you, because I'm not, I'm not looking to assess blame, I'm looking to make sure that, that this doesn't happen to somebody else again. I mean, I, I'm not looking to go back. Do, do I think that, um, if it substantiated that Don Swanson was parking her boat on her unpaid service while she was, uh, working to convict me of the same crime, do I think if that's true? Do I think that she should be reprimanded by whatever agency, the Committee on Judicial, uh, I'm sorry, the, I don't have the name off the top of my head, the committee that handles complaints on attorneys or the town or whatever, do I think that she should be reprimanded and the situation corrected? Yes. I mean, you know, blame isn't going to help anyone. Let me not go off on a tangent there, and, and some of the things that you mentioned, I do intend on addressing, and I'm not going to take a long time. But, um, I'm sorry, I don't agree that because, uh, I mean, I don't know what the town's findings to my allegations are, no one's been in contact with me. I've repeatedly emailed the town board members, I've written letters, I've asked that, I mean, up until you just told me, I didn't even know that my complaints were forwarded to the district attorney's office.
Extremely, extremely...
Zero, zero communication.
Extremely...
Okay.
I want, when we were together, I told you about this, did I?
That's just my, my personality, yeah.
No, no, that's okay, that's okay. But we'll take as long as we need, don't feel rushed or pressured, um, and let's, let's work the way we worked together when we were alone during those meetings. I thought the tenor of the meetings was great. Um, a very comprehensive submission was made by the town to the Nassau County District Attorney's Office. I lost track of the number of pages, gone, tened.
Nine.
Nine pages.
Would I be able to leave a copy of that? An objection to that?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure how that works, I, I don't know how that works, so I don't want to...
I can foil it.
No, no, I, I, yes, you can, I don't know if I can foil it, though. We'll find out. You haven't have to foil it, if, if...
I was just, I was a joke, no, bad joke, bad timing, no.
No, no, but if it's something that we can rightfully give to you, we will. Keep in mind, now, this is a matter of a district attorney's investigation, a little bit of a different forum now, but, um, the only thing I wanted to say to you is, hey, whatever time it is, stay calm.
Okay.
But we'll listen to whatever you want to say.
No, thank you.
Don't cut things short, don't take shortcuts, don't think, yeah, sorry, I'll be...
I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, so, um, I'd like to start out with my experience, my continued experience with the foil, the foil office, and I have another great file here.
And by the way, Robert, one last thing I have to go for.
Oh, go right ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, well, you know, when someone says, well, the facts are A, B, C, and D, therefore the conclusion must be E, they very well be right, that's if the facts are right.
Sure.
So, I mean, what, what, the problem we have here is, we don't agree that the totality of all the facts and circumstances which reach with regard to each one of the allegations that you've made, for example, you referred to, to Don Swanson, we don't necessarily agree that the underlying facts are as we state them.
Oh, that's right.
If they were as we state them, we might reach the same conclusion. But since we can't agree, that's why we need a third person or third entity, arbiter, if you will, to come in and determine what are the facts and what does the law say in response to a fact.
That's, that's very fair, I have no problem with that. Um, I'm sorry, so what I was saying was, I've been, you know, using the town's, using the town's foil process of trying to get, I started out trying to get information that would, I'd be able to use for my defense in my criminal trial, and then unfortunately, things just did start to snowball. I started to observe more and more instances of what I felt might be misconduct. They haven't been substantiated up. I, I believe I've, uh, attached or enclosed as much substantiating documentation as I can, but maybe a third party looking at something I'm saying, might say, this isn't so, this isn't true.
Right, now you say it's...
Okay, so, so, I mean, I'm not, I'm, believe me, I'm not objective, or not objective. Um, so, what I was saying was, my foil request primarily had to do with either information that is going to or would have possibly, uh, helped me gain an acquittal in trial, and then as I started to discover other instances of what I felt might be official misconduct, you could say, I started to do some foil requests on, uh, officials of the town of West Bay's properties. And I brought into a roadblock the town attorney's office, who, as you know, Len Genova is, is the town attorney, he's, he's like the district attorney for the town, he prosecutes all the cases, he's the foil officer, uh, he's your deputy, he's your number two guy, he's your deputy...
But he's not a law enforcement, he's not a lawyer.
Well, he's the town attorney, the town attorney, uh, you, you have a code enforcement branch, and then you, you do criminally prosecute cases, so he's the equivalent of the district attorney in the town.
That's not to make that...
But listen, okay, so, my point is, all I'm looking, all I wanted to see was some officials' building files. I mean, Mr. Aldana happens to live in Massapequa Park, I asked to see his building file, okay? The town's not responsible for his building file, but Mr. Aldana knows what's right and wrong. He went on his own, I assume, because I received this package in the mail, this is Mr. Aldana's complete building file from Massapequa Park, he has nothing to hide. He knows that the state law, the public officers' law enables me, entitles me to see this, this public information. Whether it's going to disclose and prove that the Commissioner of Planning and Development has buildings on property without permits, I don't, whether it does or it doesn't, I'm allowed to look at it. Mr. Aldana knows it. How many thousands of dollars and, and town attorney fees to fight these things? I'm in. The Supreme Court, right now, waiting for a disposition on a hearing that I had against the town for an order to show cause to find the town in contempt of court for not canceling a judgment on the court related to a foil. Town Attorney Matthew Rosario showed up for the town, and his argument was that in the last three years, I've made seventeen foil requests, that I've overburdened the town's foiled at all. That's, that's the reason for not giving me the information. That's not the reason. The reason is, you don't want to give me information because I'm going to further substantiate, or possibly further substantiate possible misconduct.
But you're right, but you're right, Robert.
I'm sorry, go ahead, keep speaking, I'll listen, I just want to...
Well, I have to, I just have to sit here, it's been a while, so I have to break my ears. That's the world according to Robert Rip, that's the, we go.
I'm sorry, John, I apologize. I can't speak, no...
No, I want to talk with you.
Listen, it's, it's...
But, no, 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 let me tell you, that, that's the world according to Robert Rip. You're assuming that these are the facts, you, these are all the motivations, all these examples.
You're right.
And the town doesn't agree with that, and that's why we now need an independent arbiter to, to determine what the real facts are.
I, I, I agree with your position, but I'm here to put it on the record, to put it out there, I'm, I'm, you know, I mean, I'm allowed to, you know...
You're absolutely...
I'm not saying you have to agree with that.
No, but I don't want anyone...
I'm not saying that I'm right.
No, 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 you're not, you're not following me. I'm not saying you don't have a right to say it, you have, you have, that is a special requirement. You have an absolute right to say whatever you want to say, that, that's, whether it's in your, in your amendment to do so or not, that's certainly up to you, but you've made a decision that you want to lay all this out the way you're doing it, and that's all well and good, you have absolutely right to do that. But I don't want you to think that because there's any acquiescence on the part of myself or the other board members or anyone in the town for that matter, that we, that we agree with what you're saying.
That's quite all right, I, I'm not expecting you to...
And as a town attorney, I probably have very little, very little that we agree on that. For example, you do make a bold allegation that so-and-so did this, but upon...
I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
Let's be specific.
I, I really want to be careful to do that with the, with the district attorney's review going on, I, I really want to be careful of that, you should do. But you'll make...
I'm not, uh, listen, there's nothing that I'm afraid to say as a attorney, I'm saying not.
You're a nice guy, I'm only, I'm only looking to, you might, you might have your own interests there.
All right.
But having said that, you might make a statement that, uh, Person A did this particular act. Just because you say it doesn't mean the person did the act. We, we agree with that.
I agree with that.
And the multiple times that you've made statements of that nature, that Person A did this, Person B did that, upon further...
I'm sorry, let me interrupt, have, have I made those statements without supplying, supporting deposition, supporting allegations?
To be quite honest with you, some of the documentary evidence that you submitted really was very deficient.
Excuse me?
It was deficient, it didn't make the point that you said.
Deficient? Are you telling, are you telling me that the photographs I supplied to you of the boats of Miss Swanson's, the all of them on unpaid service, were deficient?
All I'm saying, I'm saying...
Is that, I'm sorry, is, is that deficient?
Robert, don't talk to me as a language for prosecutor, I'm not going to tolerate that. What I am going to say to you is, though, that a great deal of the evidence that you put forward, which you say supports your position, in fact, doesn't support your position, and we, we actually arrived at very contrary conclusions. But again, this is a matter for another, for another arbiter to make decisions about. Unfortunately, we're not going to agree. You and I went through this already. No, don't, don't act like we went through this stuff like we did.
Excuse me, um, this is the first time that I've ever heard from you that you disagree with the accusations I'm making and that you feel that the substantiating documents I, I submitted don't support the allegations I'm making. It's the first time I've heard...
That's true, no, no, that's true. Well, what we did say, because you kept, you kept...
Please, sir.
No, no, you kept, at the times we met, you kept coming to me and saying, but don't you know so-and-so did this and no, you know, so-and-so did that?
No, 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 no.
No, no, and that's, Robert, and that's what I said to you, that's what I said to you, I'm not here to assess blame, I'm here to work out, because I have, I had an open mind, I had an open mind that you might be right about some things and you might not be right about some things. And when the inspection, when the investigation was done on the part of the town, that turned out to be true, you're not right about it.
No, maybe, no, I mean, I mean, nobody is.
But, no, I know, but to go out and make, and talk in the terms like you're talking...
Listen, I, I have, any allegation that I have made, I have tried my best to substantiate. I have not made of, of just a completely off-the-wall statement to anyone that anyone has said, has done, said, anything that I've, I mean, I have my complaints with me with all the supporting documentation.
I'm not saying that, I'm not saying you didn't make the best effort.
Right, and that's all I can do in this world.
I know, I was just saying, the record doesn't always permit the conclusions that you reached out to.
No, of course it doesn't, that's, that's why, I mean, that's the way it goes. But you know what, I just wanted to just touch on that, because we were talking about it now, and there were some things that you told me, and, and I hope I let you remember. You told me that you were elected to represent me, right, as a citizen, and I, I hope you agree with that. You told me you didn't think I was a criminal, right?
I don't think you're correct about that.
Okay, all right, you told me that when we were having our discussions and I explained, we talked about the code and everything, and you told me you were going to dismiss the charges against me. You did, you did, hold on, you did. And I said to you, listen, I don't want you to think that, that if we don't come to some resolution of this, that I'm going to hold you to that. You said, no, the first thing I'm going to do is take care of these charges.
Uh, this is the first unfortunate thing that has happened that troubles me. Robert, let me remind you what I said. You did bring up the subject of dismissing the charges. And I said to you, that in the framework of an amicable resolution, I would look into it, because I specifically said to you, I don't even know if that's doable in the light of the court decision, I'm not...
I disagree.
Well...
You said absolutely no problem, that's great, but it's okay, we can agree to disagree.
Well, not on that one, but go ahead.
I also would like to reiterate that I, I thought during that discussion that you made, you weren't fully convinced that the code that I was being charged with actually spelled out, parking the boat on...
I clearly said to you several times that I would revisit the code provisions, to see if there was a problem.
All right, so...
But on that last one, on the prior point, this first time, I have to say you're disappointed, you know all the stuff that...
I guess I did.
But, but go ahead.
All right, I'm sorry, but, uh, I'd just like to move briefly into my complaints here. I mean, and I'm only telling you what my opinion, I'm not, I, I, like you said, I tried to substantiate as best I can, but I believe that I've submitted enough proof to you, the town supervisor and the town court, that the town attorney who's been prosecuting me for the same crimes been caught three separate individual times committing the same crime, okay? From my foil request, it appears to me that the deputy town attorney notarizes her own building application paperwork, which I don't think is correct, and that somehow she's able to circumvent the building department process and get her permit applications approved, issued, inspected, and everything all done in one day. And I've, I, maybe I'm wrong, I've submitted the actual building application, permit applications and documents that I received from the town to the foil office, maybe I'm wrong, but that's, that's my, that's my take on that. Um, I do not believe that this woman should be an attorney in the town of West Bay and be prosecuted, and I'm actually going to ask her right now to resign her position, and I'd like to ask you to suspend her until my allegations are either founded or unfounded. I think they hold enough weight and there's enough supporting document to, to, to go with that.
I think before you age, you know, you're kind of lost again, I'm so disappointed. You just lost me in the, in the last few minutes, but instead of, but I'm going to stay with it anyway, my job's due, so, because I do represent, you're right. Listen to yourself, you're actually asking me to suspend someone until such time as allegations made against her...
It happens in the police department all the time, it's not unheard of.
Let me know when you, let me know when you finish.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sure.
Yes, go right ahead.
Listen to yourself, you're asking me to take disciplinary action against an attorney, an attorney, sitting here at the council table, until such time as the allegations you made against her are either founded or unfounded. I think that the right way to do this is before anybody takes any action against anybody or any issue, we should now await the findings of the Nassau County District Attorney's Office and the Courts of Law, which are all somewhat involved.
All right, and you know what, I agree with that, I won't ask you to suspend her, I'll retract that, but I, I still think she should resign. Um, I'd like to move on to, uh...
You can retract all you want, but you can't take back the damage, the, uh, defamatory nature, no, no, if you can't take that back, you should be careful with spoken word, it does a lot of damage.
You know, I agree with that, you can't take things back, and everything that I went through, the way I was treated for the last three years, you can't take that back again.
No, I told you, no one, I'm not asking, the other, the other one took it back, I'm not asking to take it back.
I'd like to move on to Mr. Ibelito, if that's okay.
I'm not asking to take anything back, Robert, you're the one who said, if you want to retract your statement to...
No, no, what I said was, I won't ask you to...
Not for you, just for the damage, stop.
We're arguing about that.
Go ahead, continue.
All right, I'm sorry, uh, I'm going to speak about Mr. Ibelito now. Here's a gentleman, he's the Commissioner of Planning and Development, he's had complete knowledge of my incidents since it started in two thousand and eleven. Okay, one thing I learned as a police officer, like I said, is document things. I have the complete, or I have many correspondence from myself back and forth. Mr. Ibelito spoke with me on the phone a couple of years ago, he explained to me that I was violating the code, I wasn't allowed to park my boat in my trailer on unpaid surface, and it turns out that all this while, Mr. Ibelito has been violating the same code also. And I don't know how much more substantiated I can get than to use the Google Earth history of his property, the same thing as Miss Swanson, to prove that he's been doing that all along. So, I'm very upset that I had to spend three years in court defending myself, and as much as the town would like to, and I'm not saying you, Mr. Vendetto, but I am saying, Mr. Spirella and, uh, Mr. Rosario in court, as much as they wanted to convince the court and the jury that it was me that continued this action, I mean, we all know that's not, that's not the case, I'm being prosecuted, I'm entitled to, to, to a, to a trial. So, all this while, the, the head of the department that's prosecuting me and the attorney is prosecuting me are doing the same thing. I can't stand for it, okay? I know that, that you don't want to hear it over and over, I'd like to see Mr., I'd like to see Mr. Mr. Ibelito resign also.
I, I can't tell whether or not I have the ability to read other people's minds, I really, I really don't know that, but I do know that you don't have the ability to read my minds.
I know.
Because if you do, if you thought you did, you're not reading it correctly. I don't, I told you, if we have to sit here for days, if we have to meet whatever, whatever it takes, I'm more than happy to listen to you, I'm not rushing you, I'm not pacing you, but I, but it comes a time when I hear something that, that I think is incorrect, I just want to correct it for the record. But you, you just made a statement, I know, Mr. Vendetto, you don't want to hear this. No, you don't know that, because I have no problem hearing this, I'm more than welcome I'm more than welcome to listen to this, because so far, in fact, it's important to me, because so far, every single issue that you've discussed today has been addressed in, in the report that was sent to the Nassau County District Attorney's Office.
Okay.
If other issues come up today, then that tells me I have more work to do. But when you say, "I know, Mr. Vendetta, you don't wanna hear this," that's not correct.
Okay.
I'm more than happy to hear it.
Thank you, John. Listen, I, I apologize if I keep bringing up things that have been addressed in, in your report. I mean, like I said, I never got the report, as far as I know.
The town board, the free- It wasn't directed to you.
No, but, but, I mean, I, I've reached out to the town board a number of times, and since our last telephone conversation, I wrote to you twice, asking you to respond to me. And I had no idea that you forwarded a report to anybody, how would I know?
At this point, I think, in the, in view of the nature of the allegations, in view of the nature of the allegations, I think the only thing that it was what I told you we would have to do at the meeting if we couldn't reach an amicable resolution. And I'm keen to know that.
And you know what? I, I have to agree with you that we will have to wait till after the district attorney or the attorney general or whoever it is that's gonna investigate investigators. But you can't blame me for coming here today, attempting to put my, my, hang on, attempting to put my observations out there and, and then explain that, well, I can't do anything because we already forwarded the complaint to the Nassau County District Attorney. I did not-
I'll say for the last part, I have not, I, I never had assessed blame, I have not assessed blame now. I do not blame you for coming here today, and you have all the time that you want.
Thank you, John.
There is no, we can, again, as long as it fits, I don't wanna interfere.
So, I'd also like to call for Mr. Ibelido to resign. You know, he should be given the same crimes he's prosecuted before. And to wrap it up, I just wanna speak briefly about, uh, town attorney Len Genova, right? I, I don't really, I know he's the town attorney, I know the attorneys work for him. Very surprised that someone in the town attorney's office would alter and change words in, in the law, including the motion for a document which was used to try to find me guilty of a crime that doesn't even exist. But he is responsible for that department, and when I did do a foil request on his personal property, he did use, from what I can see, I'm not, let's say, I don't wanna make this allegation that he abuses authority, but he, he somehow was able to get his building permits for items such as a fence that I have a letter from him that he informed me that I needed, so he knows you need a permit for it. But not until I did a foil was, did he then decide to obtain all his permits that he needed, which happened to be for fence and essential air conditioning. And again, somehow he's able to do everything in one day. Permanent, the permanent, I showed you, I gave you the permits as part of my complaint on them. They're not even filled out. I mean, come on, what, what's happening here? He's the town attorney, his office is prosecuting me for crimes that they're committing, the, the commissioner of planning and development is, is prosecuting me for crimes that they're committing. And then, when I start to look into him, he circumvents the building process to get all his permits and be straight one, two, three? I'd like to see him resign also. I don't think any of these people should be representing us as citizens of town of West Bay. I'm sorry, it's not about, I'm sorry, hang on.
Robert, you have nothing to be sorry about.
No, I know, I appreciate it.
Don't say you're sorry.
I, I appreciate it. I just wanna say, it, it's not a coward, you being found guilty. Like I said, I'm leaving off your justice system. If, if, if the code means you can't park, you can't park, you can't park your boat. I immediately came into compliance, and, and I, I hope that everybody else that's parking their boat in West Bay, which plenty of people that leaves it on the grass, comes with the compliance too. I don't know, I'm not, I'm not out to enforce the code. But, um, listen, man, my bottom line is, you know, I didn't, I'm not going through the whole story. You know the whole story, and I really believe, you, you happened to call this whole adventure a snowball. You said it kept snowballing, remember?
Yeah, I said it had gone too far, but a snowball coming down it.
And, and I use a different analogy. I said it was more like the town attorney digging a hole. It got deeper and deeper and deeper. It started out with your code enforcement agent, Nick Domingo, swearing that he saw things on my property that just don't exist. And instead of just, you know, saying, "We're sorry," you don't even have to say you're sorry, just, okay, that cement pad's not there. How, how could it, how can he issue a permit of, of, a violation for no permit for a cement pad that doesn't exist? Oh, he inspected the cement pad and he found it doesn't have a drainage system? I mean, come on, there is no cement pad. Instead of stopping right there, it's vindictive malicious cover-up, okay? Instead, instead, you dismissed the first four charges against me because, quite frankly, they were all, they're all lies or, or embellished. And then, the game plan was to just have him swear that he saw something different in regards to my boat and trailer that day, and add on some more charges to show me who's boss. The charges you added on, how, how the code enforcement inspector could sign an accusatory instrument and then testify in trial that he didn't prepare it. Somebody in the town attorney's office prepared it. That means that they wrote the charges, they wrote what he observed, and he just signed it. I mean, what's going on here? Over what? I don't know what else to say. I'm sorry if I kinda got off track. But I really think this whole thing, three years, and, and all this is ridiculous because, because somebody, not even, not even one of my neighbors, somebody related on, and, and you're aware of this also, because I contacted the town. Some association assaultant didn't want me to park a car in front of my house, so in retribution, they made a complaint, and this is what happened. I mean, come on, this whole thing is nothing but a big waste of time and money. And, you know, it feels good to be done with it. I mean, I, I came here, you won't see me again. I came here today one last time to face the bunch of years, tell you how I feel, you know? And, and we'll leave it up to the DA, and maybe I'm not right about everything. But, you know, one thing you said, and I agree with it, is I did my best, and that's all I can do. You know, so, thank you for your time, and-
Well, don't, let me know when you're done, don't go.
I'm, I'm good.
Just, just a very brief, in closing. If, uh, if, if someone gets a speeding ticket, it, it's not a defense to that violation to say, "Hey, everybody else next to you is speeding, you can get them." Whether that's fair or unfair. And, and I agree with that, I think you agree with that.
No, I don't, no, I'll tell you why you're not actually wrong.
Let me finish my-
Okay, finish, and I'll tell you why you're not actually wrong.
By the way, let's, let's put it this way, that's the law, we agree with that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, I didn't hear that.
I said that's the law, it's, it's not a defense to a speeding ticket to say that the person in the other lane was speeding, why didn't they get a ticket too?
Right, but-
Look, that's all the-
Go ahead, go ahead, yeah.
And the reason I say that, because that is at the heart of, of some of the things you're saying.
Disagree.
Well, but let me finish my-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That is at the heart of, of some of the things you're saying. Um, and, uh, what I'm about to say is, is, is also not a very permissive analogy, but I think it makes the point, same point that you're making on your argument. I don't know how many complaints the Department of Planning and Development handled in the course of a year, but I think it's over a thousand. I did, I used to remember, it was about sixteen hundred a year, but I, you know, tell me I have to double check. And by and large, they go without incident, sometimes fines pay. The goal is obviously compliance. Sometimes you can't get compliance, fines are paid, amicable resolutions are reached. All different, some things are dismissed in the interest of justice. We're human beings, people do make mistakes, and that's-
Of course.
Um, so, but it's no defense to you to say, Robert, that your case was like that snowball coming down the hill, uh, so therefore you must be wrong, because we handled sixteen other ca- a hundred other cases without a problem. But, common sense appraisal, it, it makes the point. A lot goes on in that department of day-to-day basis without, without any incident at all. And it does help to improve the quality of life. One of the things you said to me at our meeting, and I think you're gonna recall this, you, you beseeched me at several different junctures to please look into these things, conduct investigations, check it all out. And you even said to the supervisor, "I know you have other things to do, and I, I understand, but please, please, just..." Well, because we had to switch to a forum that requires the kind of investigation that it lasts, that investigation was done. And one of the things you said to me at our meeting, one of the things you said to me at our meeting, I think I heard you say it somewhere else, I can't remember where, but I know you said it to me. You said to me, "Hey, it's possible, after you do your investigation, there will be explanations for all of these things."
I'm sorry, that's wrong.
Ah, ah, ah.
No, 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 I didn't say after you do your investigation. I said, what I said was, I know what you're alluding to. I said, "Listen, when the code enforcement agent wrote up a accusatory instrument against me, there could have been an explanation immediately at that point when I brought it to the town's attention that it was wrong. Maybe he was reading the wrong file, anything could have happened." But my point was, I immediately brought it to the town's attention, and it wasn't addressed. Instead, it was ignored. The exculpatory evidence, the enforcement agent's own photographs that substantiated that I was innocent and he was lying, were withheld from me by Donna Swanson for almost a year, motion practice. Motion practice for almost a year! The town had to give me the photographs. I'm sorry, I disagree with what you're saying there, that's not what happened.
Can I, can I just finish the statement?
Go ahead.
Is that okay?
Yes.
All right, let me try again. You made the comment that, in my mind, no doubt in my mind, but you meant by the comment, you meant that if I looked at all these allegations, that maybe there were explanations for why things happened, how they happened, and maybe there were explanations for the way things were done. All I'm gonna say to you, as we part company today, now that all this investigative work has been completed and summed up today, allow for the fact that there are a multitude of explanations in response to each one of the allegations that you brought forward, because today was a good check for me. You haven't raised anything that you hadn't raised previously. And all of those things have been looked at and responded to. And I think you should allow yourself to be guided by what you said before, that there might be explanations for how all this occurred on the part of the town.
Is it okay if I talk?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Listen, John, there's explanations for everything. That, that's the point of investigating, to get the explanations. Doesn't mean the explanations are favorable or unfavorable, you know? But there are, of course there are explanations, and in our conversation, I was saying, look, listen, listen, we're all human, I mean, maybe the guy did make a mistake. May, and maybe he did, but why didn't, you know, I mean, why didn't he just stop then? I mean, that's my point, John. There's a mistake, and the town knows, or the town attorney's office knows that there was a mistake.
Maybe it was a mistake.
Or maybe he really saw the cement pad in my yard.
Maybe, maybe there were, maybe there were explanations, as I'm trying to tell you. And there are explanations that you might not have-
Okay, so, I would have to wait for that. You know, just to step back, I just wanna go back to your analogy about the parking ticket, because I heard that all the time when I was working. You know what? It's really fair of me to say, "Hey, why did you find me guilty of parking my boat in, in, in my, on the grass? You didn't find this guy, or this guy, this guy." Because, just like the guy driving on the road, we're all just normal citizens driving speeding. See, you don't hear anybody at, at, at parking trial, at parking court, you don't, you hear most of them making a defense of, you know, "Hey, I, I know I was speeding, but your attorney prosecuted me for speeding too." There's a big difference between someone like me, that's just a guy that lives in the town, and officials that are employed and elected and appointed by the town and are entrusted to withhold and run the government and, and entrusted to withhold our laws. There's quite a big difference with, with someone caught speeding saying, "You didn't pull over every car." And, or, or the same person saying, "Well, I was caught speeding, but the guy here prosecuted me in their offices, there was this." There's a big, big difference, John.
Well, that, that may, that may or may not be so, depending on whether or not the underlying facts are true. And what I, you know, I don't wanna say intended to be a wise guy, but it may very well be, Robert, that the underlying facts, as you are presenting them, are not so. So, what, let's, yeah, you could laugh or quack, and you could be a wise guy.
I don't, I don't understand, I mean, listen, maybe they will be-
You could use the famatory terms and be comfortable doing it, but I'm telling you something, you may really not have the basis to arrive at the conclusions you arrive at. Let's wait and see.
Maybe the district attorney's investigation will determine-
I'm not gonna guess, I'm not gonna guess what the district attorney's gonna do. It's up to them, it's up to that one.
So, as far as you're concerned, you're not gonna, you, you've done your, your town investigation and, um, I'm sorry, but there was, I mean, I haven't seen the, the report hopefully sent to me, but if you could tell me, was there any corrective action? Did you substantiate anything I said?
I think this is the third time when I said this. I don't know, I don't know that I can, I don't know what the rules are with, with that report. And also, you say we did our investigation. We are, we stand ready to do whatever the district attorney asks us to do. There may be more, there may, I don't know. So, I don't, I don't know how to answer that, I don't know.
Well, maybe I'm just phrasing it wrong. What I was trying to say is, it, I mean, maybe I'm wrong about this, but I thought that the town had an obligation to enforce its own codes and its own ethic, ethical rulings, its own ethic codes. I mean, you have the town code. I understand that some of the allegations I made, or, or all, everything was forwarded to the district attorney's office, but what I'm asking you is, did you do an investigation at the town level? Has the ethic, I mean, Mr., one of the, one of the subjects of my complaints, Mr. Genova, is on the Board of Ethics. I mean, had, I, I specifically asked the, the council members to notify the Board of Ethics about my complaints. I, I think that these are ethical concerns. Um, so what I'm asking you is, I know that you're saying everything is passed on to the DA's office, but did you, did, did the town come to any conclusions, do an investigation into possible violations of town codes, possible ethic violations, and come to any conclusion on my, my complaints on those?
The only I can say is, with, with respect to, well, everything has been done on the town's end, and actually, Mr. Savelco, Tom, tell me if I'm characterizing this wrong. I, I didn't, I didn't see any wrongdoing on the part of any-
Any kind of plea?
Any town personnel in, with regard to any matter involving Robert Riff, I think. Is that a fair statement, Tom?
Correct. Okay, all right, I don't know what else to say to you. Um, I'm shocked. I really don't know what else to say.
You, you have to consider how shocked you get if it's rough to hear, you know, some of the things that you said. You have to consider that, so.
I, I, I would be shocked if, if I was in your position and I was told some of the things that I've told you also.